Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Post Agenda Meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. Today, we will have discussion at the request of Councilmembers Corey O'Connor and Councilwoman Erica Strasburger with discussion on air quality. That concludes the discussion for today. Thank you and have a great day.
Good afternoon and welcome to City Council's Post Agenda Meeting on Air Quality. Councilman O'Connor, I'll be chairing this. This is cosponsored by Councilwoman Strasburger, who is out on leave for a couple more weeks. I want to thank everybody for being here. I'm going to have everybody at the table introduce themselves and then we're just going to have your presentations go down the line. We hosted one, I want to say, a couple of years ago with regards to air quality in our community and now with the latest that's happened at the Clarion Works and some other locations, you know, it's really important to see what cities and municipalities can really do to bump up some of our standards possibly in the future. So, I'll pass it off to our invited guests and Dr. Hacker, you just want to introduce yourself and then we'll get right back to you.
Sure. I'm Dr. Hacker. I'm the head of the Allegheny County Health Department.
I'm Jamie Graham. I head up the air quality program at the Health Department.
I'm Jim Kelly. I'm the Deputy Director for the Environmental Health Bureau for the Health Department.
Neil Donahue. I'm the Lord Professor of Chemistry in Chemistry Chemical Engineering and Engineering and Public Policy and also I direct the Steinbrenner Institute for Environmental Education and Research at Carnegie Mellon University.
I'm Ashley Deemer. I'm the Western Pennsylvania Director for Penn Environment.
Rachel Filippini, the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution.
Mark Gibson. I'm an environmental filmmaker and air quality advocate.
Thank you. And before we begin with Dr. Hacker, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for being here as well. So, Dr. Hacker, thank you.
I'm not going to say very much. We were asked to come today to talk a little bit about our permitting and enforcement efforts, more of an educational perspective than anything else and obviously to answer any questions. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Kelly.
Okay, so I'm going to give a presentation. I'm going to give a little bit of detail about our air program, how it's structured and give you a little bit of data to show you the problems that we're facing here in Allegheny County and then we'll go into the detail with enforcement and the permitting questions that I believe that this council would like us to discuss. So, the Allegheny County Health Department, our air program, we've actually, it was previous to this, it was originated as a city-county program, you know, that happened about 1895. It's arguably the second oldest organization in the country to deal with air issues. We became the Allegheny County Health Department in 1957 and currently, in the state of Pennsylvania, the Department of Environmental Protection is responsible for air quality concerns in all counties with the exception of Allegheny County and Philadelphia Counties. And we are delegated local air agencies. We have responsibilities for all aspects of the Clean Air Act and one of the reasons we have that is because our program has actually predated not only state programs but federal programs. Currently, we have 46 staff. We have engineers, scientists, administrators. We're actually working on expanding that staff currently. We're going through a lot of internal review evaluating, do we have what we need to actually operate as an effective air program? Now, the Clean Air Act, I'm not going to get a lot of detail, but the biggest thing we're all concerned about are criteria pollutants, which we are identified by EPA. There are six of them, but for Allegheny County and City of Pittsburgh, what we're worried about is ozone, SO2, and PM 2.5. The reason we're worried about those pollutants is because we are currently not meeting federal air quality standards for those three pollutants. Now, ozone is technically meeting the standard, but the area has not been officially designated as meeting that standard with EPA and so that's going to be an ongoing challenge. But currently, SO2 and PM 2.5 are violating federal standards for air quality. EPA sets these standards. They change every five years. I'm going to show you some data next about this. EPA, once they set the standards, it's up to the states or local air agencies, whoever has the jurisdiction in that area, to regulate those and to meet those standards. And I'll talk a little bit about how we do that in a moment. Now, air toxics, that's a different thing. Air toxics, there's over 180, about 187 of those. Those have a different, obviously, they lead to cancer and other hazards, health effects. Since there's so many of them and it's so difficult to monitor for those, these criteria pollutants, we have a monitoring network that's set out across the county to monitor the ambient exposure to that in the open air. Air toxics is a little bit different because that is specifically governed by regulations that apply to the industry. So, if we're talking about the coke oven rules and those air toxic standards for the coke oven plants, they have specific limitations at the plant for those pollutants, which is different from criteria pollutants because criteria pollutants, it gives a limit for what the ambient air can show as a level for that pollutant. Now, our current air program, we have four programs. We have permitting and engineering and enforcement, which is what we're going to be spending the most time today. Permitting engineering, if you have an industrial facility, it is subject to federal and state and local regulations. The permit is the place where you put all of those regulations. It's the roadmap that that facility needs to follow to make sure it shows compliance. And enforcement, they look at the data to make sure that those facilities are complying with that as well as any additional air quality regulations that apply to this county. And for Allegheny County, we have what's called Article 21, their ordinances for local air quality to protect air quality. And those, the reason those, a lot of those regulations came about is either we adopted federal requirements to meet those six criteria pollutants we talked about before as well as the air toxics, but also since this area is non-attainment, we have to have regulations that can go beyond what the federal government requires so we can meet those criteria pollutants. So, when we talk about SO2 and PM 2.5 being out of attainment, then we have to impose additional measures on our local industry to show how we're going to meet those in what's called a plan. And that planning program, what they do is every time EPA sets a standard, we have to put together a group of rules and we have to model for a future date to show how we're going to meet those EPA standards. Planning also does all of our rulemaking for the county, whether we incorporate state or federal rules or if we have to create our own that is unique to our industrial challenges. Then monitoring. So, monitoring, we have a network of monitors in this county. We have 14 monitoring locations in this county. Is one of the densest monitoring networks for a county in this country. And a lot of reasons for that is because we have a lot of industrial pollution in our history and the fact that we have such complex terrain and meteorology and so the monitoring is a little bit more of a challenge here. I used to be responsible for air quality planning for the state of Georgia. We had a 20-county area with 6 million people. We had the same number of monitors. We have one county here, 1.2 million people and so that gives you an idea of the scale of monitoring that we have going on here in Allegheny County. Now, this is a simplified iteration that shows you how everything connects together. So, we'll start at the top. And so, all of our programs have to work together and they have feedbacks and then they have responsibilities to each other. So, first, the bottom line is we measure the air. We find what the pollution levels are and we determine what we have to do to identify those problems, how to deal with that. Then we develop a plan. EPA requires this plan. The Clean Air Act has very specific requirements of what that plan requires. We develop an inventory. We model. We determine rules to show how the futures, in the future, we're going to meet those standards that EPA sets for us. Part of that is we educate. We promote voluntary actions. That's a difficult thing because there are some areas that we have no jurisdiction like rail industry. We can't really regulate the rail industry and so we have to work with them to see if they will work, use any voluntary measures because they are a significant contribution to pollution. And so, the main responsibility we have is controlling stationary sources. Stationary sources are factories and industry. Anytime you have a factory with smokestack or any type of emissions in the atmosphere, you have emission limits. You have federal, state, and local requirements. And so, that's where our permitting program comes in. And then, our compliance enforcement comes in where they look at data to determine whether or not those permits are meeting those standards that are identified in the permit. And there's a lot of things that they do. These facilities are required to keep records. They're required to do periodic testing and also, we also have to respond to complaints and develop whatever information that we need to collect to determine whether these permitted sources are maintaining their emission standards. Now, this is a trend that probably a lot of you have seen. So, I'll explain what this is. So, ozone is one of those criteria pollutants we talked about. EPA sets a standard. If you see the red lines that shows you periodically EPA changes those standards. Every time EPA changes those standards, they have to look at our monitors and determine if our monitors are meeting those standards. If we are not meeting those standards, and you can see every time one of those steps, we have not met those standards, then we have to put together a plan to bring the area into attainment with those standards. And you see, it actually works. Once, you know, you've got data that shows you're above the red line, EPA determines the area is not attainment. We put together a plan. We regulate emissions more and then we meet the standard, then EPA will change the standard because it's based on the most recent health data. And so, EPA has a group called KSAAC, the Clean Air Advisory Committee. They look at the available data and determine whether those standards are appropriate. Now, EPA does not have to take their recommendations, so sometimes the standards are not set as low as they should be. So, ozone, it's interesting. Ozone is a regional component and so the state actually takes the lead for ozone because our non-attainment area is seven counties because there's a large contribution over a large area. So, because we are part of a seven-county area, the state takes responsibility for that and that's the Department of Environmental Protection. Now, sulfur dioxide is our problem because it is a smaller area. Sulfur dioxide is an interesting pollutant. Ozone is a regional pollutant. It takes a lot of pollution over a large area because it forms in the atmosphere, only forms in the summertime in the presence of combustion with NOx and volatile organic compounds. Volatile organic compounds are things like just gasoline vapors. And so, with combustion emissions and volatile organic compounds, you create ozone in the summertime. Sulfur dioxide is directly emitted and it is very, it's tied to specific industrial sources. So, our problem for sulfur dioxide in Allegheny County is tied to the U.S. Steel Iron Works and the Coke Works. And so, we have three facilities in the Mon Valley the U.S. Steel operates. We have the Edgar Thompson Blast Furnace, the Irving Rolling Mill, and then we have the Claretton Coke Works. All of these are very significant contributions to SO2. So, we have two monitors in the area. One of those monitors shows that we're failing to meet the standards for that and the overall contribution from that is from the Claretton Coke Works. You'll see the red line there and only one of them is above the standard and that is our Liberty Monitor that directly measures the emissions from the Claretton Coke Works. PM 2.5, in most areas of the country, PM 2.5 is similar to ozone. The majority of it tends to be secondarily formed in most regions. It's usually about 60% is secondarily formed. Secondarily formed means there's chemical reactions in the atmosphere that result in PM 2.5 forming and it's usually nitrates and sulfates, sulfur compounds, nitrogen compounds typically form with ozone and they form little particles. And those particles are so small that they effectively get so deep into your lungs that they can actually cross into your bloodstream and so that's why this is a problem. However, in Allegheny County, we have a highly intense localized source of local particulate matters, a lot of fugitives, and that will be the Claretton Coke Works. And so, you'll see that top line there. Each one of these is one of our monitors and you'll see the two top monitors are both located in the Allegheny or in the Mon Valley. The one, the top line there, is our Liberty Monitor and I'm colorblind, so I don't know if that's blue or purple. It's blue. That's our Liberty Monitor. That's our problem monitor. That basically forces us to do the majority of our work, working with the Claretton Coke Works because that monitor directly monitors the Claretton Coke Works. The next line that's next to that, which is not above, is pink. It's not above the standard, but it's a lot closer to the standard we'd like it to be. That's the North Braddock Monitor and that's actually monitoring emissions from the Edgar Thompson Steel Mill with also some additional contribution from the Coke Works. And so, that's, when we talk about planning, a lot of our planning is associated with those two monitors, especially the one that's above the standard and what is necessary to reduce those emissions, to bring those lines below the red line. Now, here's the limits of our authority. So, the typical sources of pollution, the federal government is responsible for tailpipe emissions. Basically, what comes out of your car, they can set standards to reduce those emissions. They can set, like your catalytic converters and your ERG and those types of controls on your car. The federal government's responsible for that. They're also responsible for rail emissions, aviation emissions, everything, anything that's off-road, they're responsible for, including tug emissions. Those are things we really can't touch. The state, now, the state can enforce on-road vehicle activity. They can do HOV lanes and various things like that. We call those traffic demand measures. The state has limited ability to do that. They have to work with EPA to determine whether they can do that. And they also have the ability to adopt consumer products rules. And a lot of times, consumer product rules are associated with volatile organic compounds, whether you can buy paint or certain glues that has a component that can volatilize and form ozone as well as other pollutants. Now, the county overwhelmingly, our responsibility is for stationary industrial sources, how we control those, how we apply the federal rules, the state rules, and any additional rules that we are required by our planning process to show how we're going to meet those federal standards for those criteria pollutants, those nationally emitting air quality standards. Additionally, we do regulate some other areas of activity, most specifically open burning. We have a very, very specific open burning rule that says what you can do with recreational burning, with any type of agricultural burning or bonfires, various things like that. So, I'm going to hand this over to Jamie Graham and she's our Program Manager for the air quality program. She's going to talk about the specifics of permitting industrial sources of emissions.
We have 32 what's called major sources. The difference between a major source and a minor source is how much emissions you're putting out. And then, a synthetic minor, if I define that, is a source that would be putting out a major amount of emissions, but they've taken some sort of a limit, operational, so many hours a day, so many tons of product to create, whatever, to keep them under the major source limit. So, we have within Allegheny County, about 32 major sources, 70 synthetic minors and 310 minor sources. I say about because sometimes we're in the process of a major source wanting to become a synthetic minor or a new source coming on or a source closing and that's happening continuously. But that's a pretty good, stable number, somewhere in that range. And we issue different types of permits and I'm going to talk about the installation permit and operating permit, major and minor operating permit. A request for determination is just what it sounds like. It's, we don't know. We have a company. We don't know if we need a permit. So, we turn in a request to the Health Department. We analyze it. We evaluate it. We come back and say, yes, you need a permit or no, you don't need a permit.
The sides.
The sides.
There's.
Ah, I see it. So, the process of an installation permit is as what's stated up there. We get a permit application and we review it. We only have 10 days to review it to make sure it's administratively complete. That means that the check is there, all the aspects that we require are in the permit. Otherwise, it would need to go back or if it's just a minor, we will call them and say, you know, fix it, just send it in. And then, our engineers then spend the time, what do we know about that source or different kinds of sources? How do we know how it would operate? Any source needs to have an installation permit before they can even break ground to make a change, before they build something, before they, you know, they can buy the equipment, but they can't install the equipment. They can, they have to have an installation permit. The purpose of that is to make sure that they don't spend a few million dollars on a piece of equipment. Then we said, oh, yeah, but we really need this piece instead of that piece. So, they're required to have this permit in place before they begin. So, we put a priority on getting installation permits issued as they come in to make sure that we get everything done. They require, they do require a public comment and a public hearing and we respond to all public comments. We develop a technical support document that defines everything that, any number that's in the document, anything that says any limits or anything into the installation permit. Now, the operating permit then takes every installation permit and that's the IP 1, IP 2, IP 3, all the installation permits and incorporates them into one document. And then, the operating permit also then includes any kind of source testing that's required, any kind of reporting that's required and that's sometimes what takes some time. So, again, the source will submit a, thank you very much. The source will submit a application for an operating permit and again, we do an administratively complete, make sure everything is there. Then we go through every piece of equipment at that plant to see what are their limits? How are they going to test for that limit? How are they going to report for that limit? Are there federal rules that are subject for this particular piece of equipment? Are there state? Are there county? So, all of that goes into a operating permit. Again, 30-day public comment period, a public hearing. We respond to the comments. We may agree or disagree. If we agree, we may make changes to the permit. And for major sources, EPA reviews the operating permit. They do not review the minor source permit. Then we issue a permit. Anyone can appeal a permit. They can, whether it's a citizen saying that I object to the controls or the company saying we're being too hard on them, there's a possibility of appeals. So, this is what an operating permit, I'm not going to go through this very much, but this is the aspects of an operating permit, just as I said, what the limits are across the plant, what the limits are for each piece of equipment, what is the emission rate limit for each piece of equipment and then what is the emission rate across the entire plant? What are the limits? Now, this is a question that keeps coming up, that all operating permits have a five-year life. Now, we have some permits that have expired and that's determined, it has expired. However, if the source has submitted a new application, it can continue to operate, controlled by the last issued operating permit and every installation permit. And of course, they're still always subject to all our rules and regulations, federal, state, and local rules and regulations. This picture here is actually a picture of the U.S. Steel Claretton Works renewal application for their Title V permit. So, you can see, it's, there's a lot of reading involved. It's a thick document. There are extra requirements to a major source. Now, we call them in our regulations, major sources. It's called a Title V because it's Title V of the Clean Air Act. So, there are requirements. There are actually minor sources, lower emitting sources, that are required to have a Title V permit by federal rule. So, we have a number of those.
Can I go back to?
Sure.
So, a Title V permit, just to be very clear, it's a federal requirement. All agencies actually have operating permits and so with the Clean Air Act requirements of 1990, EPA decided that they wanted to make their, all of the state and local agencies' permits enforceable. So, they determined a standardized format that all permits have to meet and that's how the Title V program came about. They put in arbitrary numbers about the amount of time that you need to put together a Title V because a Title V permit had never existed before and so they required that these Title V's be issued in 18 months, not understanding the significant challenges with all of the regulations being thrown into a standardized template at the time.
And so, that leads to this graph here and this is looking at a backlog of our Title V operating permit. And you may have heard that we had a backlog of reissuance and issuance of our Title V permits. This has been, this is actually a chronic problem across the country. As Jim said, no one could get them done within 18 months. EPA's average is three years to get a permit out. So, it's, but we've been working on. We had a significant backlog, as you see from the far left from July 2016, only 30, about 35% of our permits were up to date at that time. Soon after that, we had change of management, change of supervision of the plant. We had the opportunity that our present permit manager, not only is a licensed professional engineer, but she also has an MBA. So, we had the advantage of her creativity to reassign work, to look at how to streamline and get things moving and to improve this. On top of that, EPA, we worked with EPA to come up with a plan on how to improve our permit issuance and we hired a consultant. The consultant came in and did a manpower evaluation of what kind of staffing would we need to really get everything back in order and get us back to where we should be. We're not there yet, as you can see. The blue is the issued permits. They're in place. The green right below it are those who have expired, but they're within the 18-month window that EPA expects us to be in. Yellow is, yellow is the, those that have been sitting there longer than 18 months and the red ones are the unissued ones and I'll talk a little bit about them in a bit. In fact, I'll talk about it right now. We have a three-year plan to issue all Title V or renew all of them by the end of 2020. That was our plan that we submitted to EPA and we're well on our way to meet that schedule. 21 permits have been issued. The two permits that have expired, as we saw on that other chart, five permits that have expired greater than 18 months, three of them are presently in public comment. As I said, that's a 30-day public comment through the end of March and then we'll still have to go through EPA review and issuance and one is in EPA review right now. Now, the four that were never issued, two are major sources that have compliance issues. One is under consent order with EPA and us and one is, has a number of compliance and problems with EPA trying to resolve with them. Two are minor sources that are required to have Title V permits. As I said, you can be in that situation. One of those is, also has a compliance issue that we're trying to resolve. The other one, we're just trying to get finished up and it should be out sometime soon. So, there, that's where we are on getting toward our schedule of compliance of our Title V permits. I should say that there's a number of sources that do not require permits, gas stations, small print shops, things like that. They still have federal and local requirements, but they do not require a permit. So, then we move on to our enforcement staff because our enforcement gets these permits and they have to make sure that they are enforced. And so, there's many ways to enforce a permit, to enforce our regulations, to enforce any kind of health issues. We have our scheduled events, our inspections. We have unscheduled events. Sources required to turn in a lot of reports, complaint resolution, and I'll talk about the legal remedies. Major sources are required by federal rule to be inspected every two years. Again, we have 32 sources, so 16 get reviewed every year. This is a very extensive. It can take up to several months to do a full inspection because you're checking every emission point you're going through the plant and you're checking every report and every document. It's a very extensive inspection, but you can do many minor inspections, just taking stack tests and stuff to look at what's happening. Again, all kinds of reports. I don't want to go through that. It's kind of boring. Complaint resolution, we receive about 1,000 complaints in a year, give or take, depending on the year, depending on the issues. We try to deal with the complaints as fast as we can or as practical as we can. If they come in all about one source at one time, we can deal with them together. We get a lot of general, it smells. There's not a lot we can do with that information, but we do carry that information into our statistics. We also use the Smell Pittsburgh reports, more as statistical as are there growing problems, are there issues? And they get a significant number of reports, so it helps us to develop trends and what's happening out there.
I do want to just mention, we cannot enforce off of Smell Pittsburgh.
Now, what can we enforce? When we have, when we have something that we can enforce, a notice of violation is that there's no penalty involved, there's no action involved. We're saying, we know that you did this. We're telling you that we did this. Don't do it anymore. But there's no requirement, there's no action. The enforcement action can be an order. It can be an agreement with the company. We can go to court and have a court settle it or resolve it. We have any kind of enforcement action. Now, enforcement action can be a penalty. It can be a corrective action. It could be both and quite often, they are both. And then, of course, anything can be appealed by the source as we go through it. Now, at present, we have, well, present two weeks ago, we have 40 actions waiting final payment or corrective action. About half of them are ones that were just issued in the last month, month and a half that haven't been paid yet. The other half are ones that required additional controls or a traditional monitoring device or a traditional, some sort of an action. So, we're waiting for those actions to come in place. I actually, just last week, signed six more, so these numbers, again, changed significantly over time. We have several actions that are in appeal and appeal can take a great deal of time or it can take hardly any time at all. It just depends on what the issues are and how we can, how it's going to take to resolve them. With the U.S. Steel 2018 action, the appeal activity is still going on, took a good part of staff time for, I would say, two, maybe three months.
So I'm going to talk about our enforcement policy, which we revised in 2018. I've been in this position about two years. And our solicitor has been in this position a short time before I was in this position. He's actually here today, Michael Parker. With him and his new staff of assistant solicitors, we looked at how we were doing enforcement in environmental health. And we decided we really needed something that was a little bit more robust, well, a lot more robust. We needed to be very specific. We needed to make sure that all of our enforcement activities were standardized and make sure that they were defensible and as well as give an opportunity for a lot more transparency on how we are determining, determining our penalties. And so the result was, in 2018, we revised our enforcement policy. And it's a policy that is on our website. Everybody has the opportunity to look at it. So they understand what it is that we take into consideration when we do these enforcement activities. You know, it identifies some of the things that we've approved upon, whether or not the emissions from, say, a release is toxic or not. There's a compounding factor for that. If it's an ongoing problem with repeatability, there's a factor with which it compounds that. And so that's one of the reasons why currently, with this issue with U.S. Steel and this fire, we haven't issued any monetary penalties yet, because every day is a new penalty calculation. Because it, what it does is it compounds everything before that. So if we were to issue a penalty today under our penalty policy for U.S. Steel, because of the emissions from the fire, well, tomorrow, we'd have to throw that out, start all over again and just issue a new penalty. And again, this is for monetary penalties. So this is for what we call our civil penalties. And so the calculation includes a lot of things from Article, well, everything from Article 21. We weren't sure that Article 21, again, is our air pollution rules that apply to Allegheny County. And fortunately, it's very specific. It shows you what it is you need to take into consideration, things like willfulness, the size of the source and their ability to pay, the compliance history, which is a really important thing, that really is one of those factors that allows the penalties to increase fairly quickly. Degree of cooperation, speed of compliance, you know, these are a number of things. And these are all spelled out by regulation. And so our policy takes these and identifies how we are going to apply those in determining penalties. So that brings us to U.S. Steel Claritin Works, which is the focus of a lot of our enforcement activity right now. So I'm going to go over some of the big ones. The 2016 consent judgment, which was actually before I was involved in making these decisions, will probably be our last consent judgment ever with U.S. Steel. And that's important, because a consent judgment is where both sides agree to certain terms. We were having problems with U.S. Steel. We're noticing that their compliance rates were slipping and as well as that monitor that I showed you at Liberty. I didn't quite point that out, but there's been an upward trend since 2014 that shows that air quality is getting worse. And so apparently, the way we're doing things before just wasn't working. So we revised our penalty policy. And then in 2018, we created an enforcement order. And one of the reasons that enforcement order was put in place, again, we had those issues with the PM monitor, but more importantly, compliance at the facility was getting worse. We had a time, I believe in 2014, where maybe they had less than twenty violations in a quarter. Then we had a quarter in 2017, they had over two hundred. So that's degrading compliance. And so we needed to do something about that. So in addition, in this 2018 enforcement order, in addition to applying those civil penalties from that policy, which applied those monetary requirements, we did something new that we have never done before. We actually applied a remedy. And so it was, this order required U.S. Steel to show improvements in two consecutive quarters in 2019 or to start hot idling two of their worst-befaring batteries. And that was really important, because that showed, not only you pay the penalty, but you also have to do something to improve the situation. And so this was a new, this was a new approach for us. And not only was it unilateral, which was also a new approach, the new penalty policy, but the fact that we required this remedy. And that's something, that's the big takeaway. It was a million-dollar penalty, but to us, that wasn't the most important thing. It was that requirement to show improvement or take equipment offline. So under the new penalty policy, in the second quarter of 2018, we issued another $600,000 penalty for violations. You'll see that there were 160 violations in the second quarter, which was unfortunate, because under the terms enforcement order, those first two, the 2018 enforcement order covers two quarters. And the last quarter, which was the first quarter of 2018, actually had only 150-some violations. So violations were getting worse. However... All right, so what I'm showing here is, you know, we have, we're increasing our violations, where we continue to issue penalties. The U.S. Claritin Coke Works fire, I'll go through this as quick as possible. They had, on Christmas Eve, they had a fire at the number-two control gas room. So what that did is took off, took away their ability to remove tars and oils and other chemicals. And because of that, they could not go to their sulfur removal process. And so since then, they have been processing raw Coke oven gas. Why that is significant? Raw Coke oven gas is a product of coking. It is considered, the Go-Coven gas itself is a toxic. It includes a lot of toxics. And so there are requirements for that gas to be conditioned. They're no longer conditioning that. They're burning it directly. They, we have required them to extend their coking times. We had the...
Baking is the process of baking impurities out of the coal.
Yes.
And so it's just spewing into the air.
So what happens is, you put coal in an oven, you heat it for about eighteen hours, eighteen-hundred degrees. As it's being heated, that gas is collected. And that gas, under normal operation, it goes to a facility that burned down that removes a lot of chemical constituents from that. And then it goes to another facility that removes the sulfur compounds from that. And then that gas, once it's cleaned, goes back into the facility to be burned. None of that removal of any of those constituents is happening. It is just being, it's pretty nasty stuff that's being burned. So it's the burning of that gas that's creating these problems with the sulfur dioxide. And recently, we issued an order for them to speed it up. They provided some information, so that certain things were practically impossible. We reissued the order. And currently, they're supposed to have the entire facility back online by 4:15. What we understand, it actually might even be this week.
We're going to go through these pretty quickly.
Okay, yeah. So this is, so one of the things people don't realize is we manage asbestos. If you do demolition or construction renovations, you have to do asbestos. We do a lot of permits. But I think this is what's really important for us, for this group here today. You'll see this column on the left and the column on the right. Commercial renovations, almost overwhelmingly considering the building stock, should have asbestos permits. You'll see the number that we've received for the city of Pittsburgh is only 403, as opposed to 1,354. That's a problem. Something is going on here. And what we understand is, the city of Pittsburgh, your building process, your building permit, it does not have a sign off for asbestos. Everything else, whether it's plumbing, whether it's electrical. So when you give that permit to someone to build, no one knows that you have to remove asbestos. Asbestos is the problem, because Pennsylvania is one of the worst states in the country for asbestos mortality. Allegheny County is one of the worst in the state. And our asbestos mortality is twice the national average.
You don't oversee airborne lead in demolitions?
That's one airborne, that's one of the things we can't really regulate.
Is it EPA only?
Yeah, that's EPA issues.
That was my understanding.
And I think this is, this is the end of our presentation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I will endeavor to be brief. I don't have any slides, so I don't need that. So again, I'm Neil Donahue, and from Carnegie Mellon University. And just as a little more background, I was actually born in Montefiore Hospital in 1963. My parents came through first, they moved to Pittsburgh just after the Second World War. They came through during the war, when we were hell with the lid off famously. So I know all the sides of Pittsburgh, and I'm from here. And I love the town. Also, our center, the Center for Atmospheric Particle Studies at CMU, without trying to be too boastful, is arguably the best research center in the world on this problem. So we are genuinely world experts on the, on the science behind what Jim was talking about. And in fact, at present, we have a, we have a center, we call the Center for Air Climate and Energy Solutions, which is a $10-million center funded by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to continue to investigate air pollution and health. And I'll use some of the findings from that study here. We've been doing this for a while. So we also had a center, an EPA-funded Pittsburgh air quality study in 2001. That measurement station behind the Fourth Green on the Bob O'Connor golf course back in 2001, that was us. We are responsible for the so-called ramp sensors which are around Allegheny County. I participated in the air toxics review that I believe was chaired by Don Burke a few years back for the Allegheny County Health Board. And we've done several projects funded by the Clean Air Fund, including an ongoing study of the dispersion of SO2 in the Mon Valley. The PI of that is my, actually, my first doctoral student, Albert Presto, who's also on our faculty. So just a few brief points that are the summary of all the science that we've done and the implications of that science. The first thing you should know is that there's approximately, a conservative estimate is there's about 250 attributable deaths each year in Allegheny County from exposure to fine particulate matter, the PM 2.5 that Jim was talking about. If you monetize that, that corresponds to about two-and-a-half billion dollars a year in environmental damages. It's an enormous number, right? That's twice the county budget. I said two-and-a-half billion, right? And if I said million, that was a mistake. It's about 600 million a year in Pittsburgh on a per-person basis, again, comparable to the budget in terms of environmental damages from that exposure. By comparison, there's about eighty fatalities from homicide in the county each year. There's about eighty fatalities from traffic incidents. So we're talking many times that combined. It's of order, the opioid epidemic. So this is a calamity of the highest order when you look at it in that, in that context. And as I say, that's a conservative estimate. And most of that mortality is in the form of heart attacks and strokes. So that's what the deposition of fine particles in the deep lung ultimately triggers, is a systemic inflammatory response that increases significantly the risk to heart attack and stroke. It's also possible, I told you I was born here when air quality was dramatically worse. And it's not that hard to keep in mind the two bits. We've come a long way. So has, so has much of the rest of the United States. But also, we still have a very significant air pollution problem in the county that I just described. Those things are not contradictory. They're both true. It's about 50% cleaner than it was in 2000, when we had that study with the, with the station in the golf course, largely because the concentrations of the sulfates that Jim was mentioning have gone way down in that 20-year period. So actually, the most common constituents in fine particles that we measure now are not nitrates and sulfates, but rather organic compounds, by a rather wide margin. But still, much of that organic material has been chemically processed in the atmosphere, as Jim was talking about. But we have made strides. And of course, it's many, many, many times cleaner than it was when I was born in 1963. But that level of risk that we currently experience is still, as I said before, an unacceptably high risk. One of the things in terms of policy that we don't do, we don't do here, we don't do in the country, is we don't put in the avoided damages from the investments we've made into improved air quality into our calculations of things like gross domestic product. So if you take those so-called gross environmental damages and put them into your calculation of how we're doing, and then you look at the consequences of the improvements in air quality that we've had since 2000, since 1980, since 1963 and before, you get to, I mean, our damages now are a couple billion dollars a year in the county. The avoided damages from the improvement in air quality are much higher. So if you factor those into calculations on a national level, you're looking at numbers that are close to a point in GDP of improved economic growth due to that investment in air quality. It's not a trivial number. And this is research that my colleague Nick Muller has done. He's the Lester Lave Professor of Environmental Economics at CMU and in our center. So considering that in the policy is in the very least an important thing to do. Another thing to note is that particulate matter and pollution in general are some sort of mixture of local emissions that we're very sensitive to and also the regional background. And again, those are not contradictory. They're both true. And obviously, we have more control over the local emissions, but we have to participate in policies that respect the fact that air moves. And it can move a very long way. And it makes a little bit of a difference how you look at things. So when we look at the, at the number of fine particles we see in Pittsburgh, and this is work that we've just finished, a significant amount of work on, almost, the exposure to fine particle and ultrafine particle number is much higher due to local emissions right here. So close to sources, close to roadways, close to restaurants. So vehicles and cooking are major sources of numbers of fine particles. And then if you're near, if you're in North Braddock and Braddock and Liberty, you have exposure. And other areas in the county, you have exposure to industrial sources as well. So especially when you look at it on a number basis, those primary, fresh, nearby emissions are a really major contributor. Other things too, that are quite significant, the Port Authority buses. So our, we're just, we're finishing a study that looks at the risk associated with exposure to buses from the rear end, not the front of the buses, but the back of the buses. They kill about one or two people a year in the county. And exposure to emissions from buses is actually about 60% higher when you account for the fact that buses go where people are. That's a good thing, right? That's what they're supposed to do. But that, what we call the covariance, the fact that the buses are nearby. They're in Market Square, they're in heavily populated areas. And when you look at things like the Oakland Downtown Corridor, investments in clean buses there and electrified buses make an enormous amount of sense and would go a long way toward essentially saving one or two lives a year from exposure to those bus emissions. The last comment I'd like to make is that most of those sources of air pollution are also fossil fuel. And so the risks that we're thinking about globally when we think about climate change and global risk of, and the local risk of changing climate, are from the same sources, by and large, as the risks that we were exposed to very locally here due to the air pollution. So when we think about the benefits of things like the CAP 3.0, the Climate Action Plan, many of those benefits are going to be, once we fully decarbonize the economy in the eastern United States and in Pittsburgh, we'll be looking at avoiding of order 200 of those deaths. So again, if you monetize that locally, you see that the benefits of things like sensible climate action are actually enormous and local. And it's not just altruistically doing things to save the planet.
Thank you, Ashley. But before you start, I just want to say we're joined by Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Harris, and Council President Kraus. Thank you.
I do have a presentation, so... While he's setting that up, I just...
Sorry, we don't have printouts of them, but can you get them to us after everybody? Yeah. We can get them all from everybody and direct email everybody.
Question around asbestos.
Yes.
So my understanding, one of the things
So my understanding, one of the things that we've struggled with here in the city is asbestos remediation.
Yes.
Especially when we're demoing, and the cost, it escalated from about $13,000 to about $43,000. And part of that, I understand, was an agreement we had with the county for a shared services contract which helped escalate that price to a certain point, but that has expired? And we are able to come in at a lower cost to do asbestos remediation now?
No, the change was an understanding of a change in the interpretation of the rules that came through EPA. It was, there was no.
I have questions on this subject too. So can we? Ashley's presentation and then address.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, fine. I thought you were going to take some time to set it up, but it's important to all of us.
Yeah.
There's a lot of clarifications, a lot of misinformation about that.
Yeah.
The city was doing it, and they are.
Right, but I think you're talking, I think that he's talking about something different. I think you're actually talking about how much one is paying for the remediation, and I don't know that we know if there was a relationship with the county where they were able to pay together. I don't know the answer to that.
That's not it. I can clarify some of that, but can we hear Ashley?
Well, yeah, a couple more speakers, then we'll get right into it. Sorry.
Sure. Well, thank you, Councilwoman O'Connor, for hosting, and to all the council members who came out. Thank you so much. My name is Ashley Deemer. I am the Western Pennsylvania Director for Penn Environment. Penn Environment is a statewide environmental advocacy organization, and we work to protect our air, water, and open spaces here in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia and all the places in between. Whoop, whoop, that's okay. So what I'd like to talk about today is the tremendous work that the whole coalition of organizations working on this issue have been doing. Certainly, Penn Environment has had a role in that, but other organizations like GASP, Clean Water Action, The Breathe Project, Clean Air Council, and others that I'm missing right now have been instrumental in a lot of the community organizing that has been done on this issue. Like any other issue, the momentum is always with the status quo, and so to do the hard work and have the political courage to make change and clean up our air will need a really informed and motivated public to speak out in support of these changes. So this is the type of work that the coalition has been doing. The first thing that we need, like with any organizing effort, is to have messaging that resonates with the community and motivates people to take action. So the very first thing we know is that all people have a right to clean air, and we know that this is a message that everybody understands. It's simple, and it makes sense to all of us. We also know that health-based messaging is really important in motivating people to take action and speak out. We know that Allegheny County is ranked in the 2% of U.S. counties with the highest cancer risk from air pollution. We know that rates of asthma among kids at our most polluted school districts in the county have a 22% asthma rate. That's compared to a 10% asthma rate at the state level and 8% at the national level. And we also need that we know that we need health-protective laws and enforcement of those laws to get cleaner air. And so that solutions piece is part of what motivates people to not just feel helpless, but to take action. So one of the ways that we bolster the messaging that the coalition uses is through research. So first, we have a lot of incredible public health professionals in the region, researchers who work at our universities and our hospitals, who have the resources to examine public health data that we have and work directly with people in communities that are impacted by air pollution. Pictured there, you see Dr. Deborah Gentile. She is an asthma researcher, and she works with kids in communities that are in the shadow of major polluters, including Clerton, and she has identified many of these disparities in the asthma rate in kids. Penn Environment has also issued several reports on existing data. One thing that you see there with the map is our Toxic 10 Report, which has identified the 10 most toxic industrial facilities in Allegheny County. You can go on Toxic10.org and search any address of your home, your school, your workplace to see just how far you are from any of these polluters and what chemical compounds they're emitting into the air and exactly what the health impacts of those pollutants are. We've also put out a report called Trouble in the Air, which takes EPA data and translates that into easy-to-understand facts. So we know that in 2016, Pittsburgh had 121 unhealthy air days. That means we had elevated particulate pollution and elevated ozone, which made it unhealthy for some sensitive populations to breathe. That's one out of every three days. So we know that's a really important fact that we need to get out in the public. We also, you know, there's a category of research called citizen science that I think Mark will talk more about and that Neil mentioned, but there, you know, there's a network of home-based and community monitors out there that collect pollution data. We have the Smell Pittsburgh app, which allows people to report how they're personally being impacted by pollution on a daily basis, and that helps us understand trends in pollution, where pollution is traveling, and again, what the day-to-day quality of life impacts are for people. So all of these things combined, we have a really growing mountain of evidence that air pollution is impacting the people living in our region beyond mortality and acute health impacts. It is impacting quality of life. So we use all that data and we take it out to the public because we think it's really important that people understand the issue, that people understand where the polluters are and what the solutions are. So we do that in a variety of ways. Not just Penn Environment, but Clean Water Action and other groups canvass our communities and go door-to-door, talking to people about the issue, trying to understand how much folks know, filling in the gaps, answering questions, and plugging people into ways that they can take action and support cleaner air. We also go out to public meetings and events. So you all are in many ways much more connected to your communities than our groups are, and so you are the connector there. And if there are meetings in your communities, block watches, community councils, that need to hear about this issue, please, by all means, let our coalition know, and there will be a group who will be happy to come out and give a presentation. We also educate the public in a broader way through media coverage. We can reach thousands, tens of thousands of people by having press conferences about the reports and research that I mentioned or new developments on this issue. And when those are covered by the Post Gazette or the Tribune Review or KDKA, we're reaching the broad region that makes up Pittsburgh. And so we're educating people in a, you know, a faster and bigger way through media. And I should also mention, while we're talking about media coverage, we also use the opinion pages, right? So if we see a piece of this issue that is not being covered or is not getting the attention that we think it deserves, many of our groups will write letters to the editor. There are so many volunteers in this movement who respond to news stories that maybe mischaracterize the issue or underestimate the issue, and so we interact with the public in that way as well. And then, of course, when you have an educated and informed public, they want to know what they can do, because Pittsburghers always want to know how they can help. And so we work to plug people into opportunities to let their decision-makers and county officials and state and federal officials know that they want cleaner air. One of the simplest things people can do is to sign a petition in support of cleaner air and in support of strong enforcement of the law, strong laws. And so anytime we're out at a public meeting or in the community or at people's doors, we have a petition for folks to sign. About, over 3,000 people have signed a petition in support of clean air over the last year, and we'll be doing more of that outreach this year. All of our groups do this in some form. We also work to create spaces for public comment to make sure our communities are heard on this issue. So one example of that is with ATI or Allegheny Technologies, Inc. They're in Brackenridge. They're number two on our list of Toxic 10 facilities, but they've never had the necessary permits to operate under the Clean Air Act. And so in December of 2017, the Allegheny County Health Department issued a draft permit, which is progress and a good thing. And the only hearing on it, however, was in Lawrenceville, and Brackenridge is a long way from Lawrenceville. And so Penn Environment, GASP, Clean Air Council worked together to organize a community hearing in Brackenridge to make sure those folks had an opportunity to provide feedback on the draft permit. About 50 people showed up and packed the room, and everyone there was in support of clean air. So we know that when we provide people the opportunity to speak out, they do, and it's always in favor of progress on this issue. And as you can see there, we've also been doing a number of rallies over the last year. We've had, over time, hundreds of people come out to these rallies downtown, typically at lunchtime, so that everyone working downtown can see and our elected officials can see that people support clean air. We've had a lot of great community leaders come out and speak on this issue at these rallies, including State Representative Summer Lee, you can see there, State Representative Sarah Inamorato. We've also had representatives of County Controller Telsa Wagner's office and our very own Councilwoman Deb Gross. So these are another way that we mobilize the public. And also, usually, these get media coverage and help inform the public as well and show a momentum, and people always want to join a campaign with momentum. We also know that one way we can take the fight directly to polluters is through legal action. You see here, this is a polluter not in Allegheny County. It's just over the Allegheny County line in Manessin. This is the ArcelorMittal Coke plant that reopened after several years of the plant being idled. And it reopened and started up operations, but didn't have all of the necessary pollution controls in place. And so as you can see there, it was raining down pollution on Manessin and Denora and other neighboring communities. And we started receiving phone calls, actually, from residents in that area. So Penn Environment worked with the National Environmental Law Center to investigate this case and get all the facts, and we ended up suing ArcelorMittal. They're the largest steel company in the world. And we sued them, and it did take some time, but in December of 2017, we reached a settlement, which we believe is the largest citizen suit provision settlement in Pennsylvania history. It required ArcelorMittal to pay $1.5 million in penalties to the EPA and the DEP to help fund further inspections and enforcement work. It also required the plant to upgrade its pollution controls, so it immediately stopped that pollution or limited it in some way. And then it also required ArcelorMittal to pay $300,000 to the Community Foundation of Westmoreland so that they can fund clean air projects in communities. So legal action is often an effective route that organizations and individuals can take where it may be difficult to enforce the Clean Air Act or regulators have failed. In the case of US Steel, who you notice I also have listed on the presentation, we've talked a little bit here today about the fire that occurred at the Clerton Coke Works in December on Christmas Eve. That fire explosion really knocked out their pollution controls or some of their critical pollution controls, which has resulted in raw Coke oven gas being flared or burnt at several of their Mon Valley Works facilities, including the Clerton Coke Works and the Irvin Plant in West Mifflin. So well, about a month ago now, Penn Environment and Clean Air Council, as well as the National Environmental Law Center, announced a 60-day notice of intent to sue. This is part of the citizen suit provision of the Clean Air Act. We have to provide notice. And so we're about day 45 now, and we're reviewing what's been done at these plants, and we'll make a decision on whether to sue US Steel coming up here in mid-April. So stay tuned for more news on that. But we do applaud the work that the county health department has done on that case, and we think that our efforts are complimentary. So you might ask, all this work, what are the results? Well, we can see that public opinion is changing, right? So we live in a steel town. This work is not new. People have been fighting for clean air for generations, but we think the way that we've been doing it, the way that our coalition and all the groups have been doing it for the last several years has begun to yield real results, and we're seeing folks have a change of heart about whether it's worth risking our health to have these facilities operating with reckless abandon, frankly. And so we see that not just the public, but decision-makers are changing their language about it too. Rather than dismissing concerns about health, we now see state legislators telling CEOs they have to take action. We see stronger polluter accountability, as the county health department just mentioned. We've seen some really strong action against the Clerton Coke Works in particular over the last eight months or so, and they've been fined, I think it's about $2.1 million now since last July. That's a huge, huge step that I don't think has ever been taken in Allegheny County in the past, and so we see that changing. As I said, we have supportive decision-makers. There was a hearing not long ago of the Democratic State House and Senate Policy Committees in Clerton to discuss the results of the fire at the Clerton Coke Works. And so many of those legislators who represent tough districts, who for a long time have hosted these polluters, stand up and tell US Steel that something had to give, something needed to change. And so we see that changing as well. And we know that as we all begin to be on the same page, the county health department, advocates, state legislators, every level of elected official, as we all get on the same page and start aiming towards the same goal, we're all in a better position to advocate for better state and federal laws together as a community and as a region. One thing that we didn't talk about is the fact that the Trump administration has been rolling back many of our cornerstone environmental laws at the federal level, from parts of the Clean Air Act to the clean cars' fuel efficiency standards that impact pollution from cars and trucks. We can stand up during the public comment periods for these rollbacks and as a community speak out and say, that's not okay. And hopefully, at some point, we'll have a better political environment in which we can advocate for even stronger laws, not just hold the line. And so the results I'm seeing are really positive, and certainly, there's so much more to come. Let's see. So one of the questions that we get a lot, and I think Rachel will touch on this as well, is what can city council do? Well, certainly, you all have a tremendous community platform in your districts to speak publicly about this issue and advocate for strong polluter enforcement. Again, you have the ability to oppose the rollbacks of these really critical environmental laws, and you have the ability to go to your partners in the state legislature and say, we need new tools to deal with this issue here locally. We have a really critical situation here in Allegheny County. You can also do a lot to encourage progress at the city level, right? How can you reduce the pollution burden of the city? And some of that is already happening and has already been mentioned already. One thing that the city is doing is already transitioning to zero-emission electric vehicles, and that's really fantastic. We think that when that electricity comes from renewable sources, that's a really positive and straightforward step a city can take and really any agency or business can take. It'll take some diligence during budget time to make sure the funding's always there for those vehicle replacements, so we'd ask for your help with that. We also think investing in clean renewable energy sources in the region is really important, and the city has a lot of purchasing power. You have a lot of facilities that require electricity, and so negotiating a power purchase agreement to encourage development of solar and wind in the region is another really straightforward, positive step the city can take. And then, of course, there are the individual decisions of city residents to invest in their own zero-emission vehicles, to take public transit, and there are incentives that the city can investigate and take on to make that more possible, to make that easier for residents. So those are some of the recommendations we would have for city council, and I know that Rachel has some additional thoughts on things, but I will just leave it there because we are running short on time. But my contact information is there, and I'll be sure to share my presentation with you all. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you.
Presentation.
Yes.
So good afternoon, everybody. My name's Rachel Filippini, and I'm the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution, or GASP. GASP is actually celebrating our 50th anniversary this year of working in Pittsburgh and beyond to improve air quality in southwestern Pennsylvania. So many of you are probably familiar with GASP from our work over the years, and we do this work through education and advocacy, policymaking, and legal work. So we've already heard from several speakers about the advancements that we've been making in air pollution and cleaning up the air over the last several decades. And no doubt, our air is a lot cleaner than it was when GASP started in 1969. But when you compare Pittsburgh to other regions across the nation, we still rank quite poorly. And that is, you know, it's a black eye for our region and something that's not going to encourage industry or new businesses to set up here, encourage people to want to stay here. We know that Pittsburgh ranks as one of the top 10 most polluted cities in the nation with respect to fine particulates, and we rank in the top 2% of counties in the nation with respect to cancer risk due to exposure to air toxics. When you look at our PM data from all of the monitors, a lot of times, people will say, well, it's just that monitor down in the Mon Valley, in the Liberty Monitor. Well, no, it's not. When you look at it collectively, all of our monitors together, comparing them to the 775 other monitors across the nation, rank very poorly, in the worst 20%. And in fact, three of the 10 PM 2.5 monitors in our region are in the worst 10% nationally.
This has been such a long hearing. I just want to clarify, so when we saw charts, so we're showing what, whether we are above or below the EPA rate. or below the EPA rating, that is a different lens of looking at the same data, but by looking at it by comparison to other cities nationally.
That's right.
Just to clarify.
And then also for ozone, uh, when you look at, now, our ozone rankings here are not quite as bad as PM 2.5, but still, compared to, um, the over 1,100 monitors in the nation, we rank in the worst 30%. So why is GASP still around 50 years later? Why do we care about these issues? Well, first and foremost, it's because air pollution makes people sick, it shortens lives, and it negatively impacts quality of life. So if you have a, a beautiful evening or a nice night where you want to keep your windows open, but you can't because of some stench blowing in, that's a quality of life issue. Um, if you want to go for a run and you can't because you're worried about what you're being exposed to and you just can't breathe very well, if you can't send your kids out to play, those are all quality of life issues. We also know that new research shows us that it affects us socially through decreased productivity, school attendance, and lifetime earnings. So if kids are missing school because of asthma, then their parents are missing work, and this all means the family's just not doing quite as well as they need to be doing. We also know that people and companies may not want to move to our region and locate here with our poor air quality. Will, um, will companies be able to track the talent they want to come to the Pittsburgh region if our air pollution is something that they have to try to explain? And we have so many wonderful universities in the Pittsburgh region, but are young people going to want to stay and use their degrees and use their talents here? Um, if they're thinking about our air pollution, do they want to raise a family here, or do they want to buy a house here? So those are all considerations that you need to think about. So we know that air pollution has gotten better, but, and that's thanks in large part to the Clean Air Act, which has benefited, uh, Americans all across the United States. We also know it remains a significant public health threat, and far too many people are living in areas of the country where the air they breathe is posing a threat to their health and, uh, quality of life. We know that the EPA says that over 20 million school days are lost each year due to air pollution, uh, school and workdays, I should say, and that the estimated excess mortality is 125,000 deaths per year. More than 122 million people are living in counties with one or more pollutants in exceeding the national ambient air quality standards. So in Allegheny County, we're not meeting the standards for PM 2.5 and SO2. So when we think about air pollution, naturally, everyone thinks about asthma and respiratory health, and that, of course, is true, but air pollution really affects just about every part of your body, from asthma to cancers to heart attacks and strokes, diabetes and dementia. And this is a slide taken from the EPA that shows since 2016, there have been more than 2,800 publications on air pollution and human health that are looking at all variety of facets of your body. So that's a lot of publications in the last two years. When we say air pollution, um, what are we really talking about? Well, we're talking about a whole bunch of stuff, but we are mainly talking about those criteria pollutants, um, that you see up there. Um, and so, these are ubiquitous. They're coming from all kinds of sources. They are known to have, um, health effects. There are standards set by the federal government that we need to meet, and we're not meeting them right now for sulfur dioxide and particulate matter. These pollution from, that, that creates these criteria pollutants comes from all kinds of sources in our community. The largest sources like the Clerton Coke Works and Edgar Thompson Facility and the Cheswick Power Station, to smaller sources like restaurants, um, foundries like the McConway and Torley Foundry in Lawrenceville, of course, mobile sources, so our cars and our trucks, trains, off-road equipment, and wood smoke as well. So it's coming from a variety of sources, so we need a variety of strategies to clean them up, a variety of solutions. So there's definitely something for everybody to be working on. Now, none of us is immune to air pollution, but there are some, um, audiences that are especially vulnerable, and that includes the elderly and those that may have underlying health conditions, children whose bodies, whose brains and lungs are still developing, from an occupational standpoint, those that work around equipment and round these sources day in and day out, uh, athletes that may be exercising outside, getting a more concentrated dose while they're trying to do actually something good for their bodies, pregnant women and their unborn children, and of course, where you live, um, you might have, uh, you know, a heightened exposure just because you're clo- in close proximity to a source or sources. So what can you do as city council members to help inform and protect Pittsburghers? Well, thanks, uh, you're having this discussion today, and that's a, that's a first step. But one is to really know about the sources in your community. Um, up on the GASP website, we have what's called the Allegheny County Air Permits Clearing House, and, um, you can look at every Title V and synthetic minor source in Allegheny County, and actually, in all of southwestern Pennsylvania. You can go onto a Google map, you can see what is in a three-mile radius from, you know, your home, or what's in your, um, council district. You can click on any one of those sources and bring up that source's permit. Then you can see exactly what they do, what they process, what they manufacture, and what pollutants they are permitted to put out. So that's very important. We would often meet with people that aren't even aware of the sources in their own community, let alone what they're putting out. It's also so important to know when these permits are up, are these permits up to date, and you heard more about that, um, from the Health Department, and when are the public comment periods or hearings happening? These periods are usually only 30 days, but this is a wonderful time for people to go and speak out on these particular sources. You need not be an attorney or an engineer to speak out on these sources. Uh, having that type of technical expertise is certainly helpful, but it's also very important that the Health Department hear from the very people that live, work, play, and go to school by these sources about what they're seeing. Have they been smelling things? Have they been seeing lots of emissions? This is an opportunity to speak at these hearings, to have your voice heard, to be part of the record, and to make sure that you get a response to the comments you make. So I would encourage you as city council members to get on, uh, the emailing list from the Health Department to find out when these hearings are going to happen, so that you can help inform your constituents. Diesel particulate matter is one of the greatest inhaled air toxic, air toxic cancer risks in the region. It comes from a variety of sources, both on-road and off, and it's spewed right there at ground level where children are playing, where people are waiting for the bus. Um, it's not coming out of a, a smokestack hundreds of feet in the air. So what are we doing about cleaning up this? Well, in Pittsburgh, we have clean construction legislation that actually passed, was amended and passed in July of 2016. And the first project to include this legislation, include these specifications, is going to break ground this spring in Duck Hollow. So this is, this is great legislation that you, many of you helped to pass, and it means that any city-funded project of 2.5 million or more has to use clean construction equipment. That means the bulldozers and the backhoes and the dump trucks, anything going on to that project site has to be the cleanest equipment possible. And that's great news, but it's very small in scope. This is only affecting city-funded projects. So what we need now is for the URA and the PWSA and all the other authorities, that many of you sit on their boards to adopt the same policies. So you can take your influence on these various boards and make sure they're adopting this policy, so we can actually have a much bigger bang for the buck.
We want you to work with us on that.
Okay. I'm happy to. We also need all of our universities, um, to be doing this. You know, UPMC has a policy, Chatham University does, and Pittsburgh Parks has done some clean construction, but we have a lot of other institutions in our region that could be doing this too. We have a no idling law in Pennsylvania that says that diesel vehicles can't, on-road diesel vehicles cannot idle for more than five minutes in an hour, with some exceptions. Unfortunately, we see this happening all the time, and unfortunately, the Health Department inspectors, because this is not reg- a regulation, this is legislation, they didn't, that, for whatever region, did not allow Health Department inspectors to enforce, it's, it's very disappointing that they're not able to. Police can though, and so can, um, the Pennsylvania DEP. So if your constituents see this happening, you should let them know that, uh, the police can issue a ticket. Open burning in Allegheny County is another issue we get a lot of calls about. If you live in many of the communities of Pittsburgh, if you live in Lawrenceville, for instance, there is no way you have enough of a backyard that you should be having, uh, a big fire in your backyard. You just do not have enough property that you are not going to affect your neighbors. There's just no way about it. So the open burning regulation says essentially that you have to keep your fire to three feet wide by three feet long, two feet high, and that you need to be, um, have at least 15 feet from the nearest dwelling or inhabited area in order for you to have this fire. But we know that even if people are falling, following all that, their fire might still be a nuisance to their neighbors, because it might be bypassing their home and blowing right into their neighbor's bedroom window. Uh, it's a big problem, and so, it's important that city council members know that if it's a nuisance, any of those criteria, the, you know, this, if a person's burning several days a week, if it's an inversion, if it's, um, you know, they're putting stuff in the fire that's, you know, not just clean dry wood, but other stuff, it could be creating a, a big problem. And so you should know there's more that can be done about that, and your local municipalities can be more stringent than the Health Department in this regard. So you can actually, um, do more if you want to ban this. Um, and there's going to be municipal education coming up, um, from the Health Department later this year that may speak to this issue. Um, so a lot of the things that we want to do to improve air quality, voluntary measures take money. There is money available out there. The county has a clean air fund with approximately $12 million of it that the city could maybe be tapping into for pollution prevention projects, air quality education. So let's take advantage of those funds to do real good air quality work and reduce emissions. There's also the Driving Pennsylvania Forward Program, which is the Volkswagen settlement money. This is for grants that will allow, um, odor-polluting diesel engines to be cleaned up. So that's money that you could take advantage of. There's also other diesel federal funds that you might be looking to. There's, there's, I mean, we could spend a long time here talking about what more the city could do, but these are just a few other things. What can the city do on predicted poor air quality days or predicted poor air dispersion days? So if you know that tomorrow's going to be an orange day, or you know that the county's meteorologist has said, "It looks like it's going to be a poor air dispersion day, there's going to be inversions tomorrow," are there steps the city could be taking to promote, um, mission reductions? For instance, could you be incentivizing the use of public transport on these days? It's just one idea. Could there be better coordination between city planning, environmental services, parks and rec, transportation and engineering, to always be thinking about new development, new projects with an eye towards a mission reduction? I know the cities has your, um, your climate action plan, there's a resiliency plan, there's P4, there's a lot of stuff already happening, but when you look at their, look at those plans, there's, I, I feel like there could be more air quality, uh, specifically in those, so I think that those could be further fleshed out and other two opportunities will arise. And I just think there's a lot of other cities in the United States and Europe that are, that are doing other things on a citywide basis to, um, uh, encourage cleaner air, voluntary measures that can be encouraged, incentives, things like that, that we could be further exploring as a city, um, that could make our air that much better for everyone to breathe. So that's all I have for today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark? Yeah? Do you have a handout? Okay.
Thank you. We don't have to turn all the way around. I don't want paper. Could you send this to me in the electronic version?
Yeah, I have it in PDF and PowerPoint. Yeah, everything will be available. So do I have five minutes or two minutes?
Whatever you need.
Okay, thank you. Um, hi, my name is Mark Dixon. I'm an environmental filmmaker here in the region and appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. I'm going to be talking primarily about the encounters that I have as a filmmaker. I go and talk to a lot of people about air quality all throughout the region, so I have lots of stories, but also, I use certain tools to, to connect with people through the region, and I'll be sharing some of those and the lessons that they give. So it's clear from all the presentations, we have an air quality problem. It causes certain harm, uh, not just harmless stench or asthma, it affects quality of life in a wide range of ways. As a filmmaker and air quality advocate, I talk to many people. Also, we've, we've, um, discussed that there is a strong and large collaborative, uh, dozens, if not hundreds of people are working on this issue throughout the city and the county, millions and millions and millions of dollars spent trying to clean the air in one way or another, thousands upon thousands of person hours are spent from people spending their productive time trying to address air quality. This is a chart of daily smell Pittsburgh, smell Pittsburgh report counts above a Level 1, so everything except just fine. This is one symptom of what I would call the lawless injustice of our regional air pollution. We have laws about malodor and about clean air on the books, but clearly, those laws are not resulting in actual clean air in the lived experience. This is a word cloud of what people are submitting to the Smell Pittsburgh app. Uh, the Allegheny County Health Department, sometimes I call and ask questions, and I have heard from them, "Just because you can smell it, it doesn't mean it's bad for you." And I would offer, my version is, regardless of whether or not we can smell it, we know it's bad for us because of the statistics on air quality and cancer, at the very least, through the region. This is a word cloud of the symptoms that people have been reporting through the Smell Pittsburgh app. These are not insignificant symptoms, and I believe that people are submitting to the app because they seek agency over their suffering and frustration. They seek control over a situation that feels unreasonably out of control. They can't just think and submit, they have to take out their phone, click a few buttons, So we're back to the slide of the Smell Pittsburgh app submissions. This is from the beginning of the Smell Pittsburgh app in 2016, late 2016, to right before the Clerton Fire. Then you can see in the next slide, um, after the Clerton Fire, I see lawless injustice compounded by lawless injustice. Notice the spikes in complaints after the fire. Intermittent frustration on the left erupted into widespread outrage, frustration that didn't have a legitimate outlet finally did have a legitimate outlet in the media, and this technology in Smell Pittsburgh was there to listen. This is a monthly total of Smell Pittsburgh complaints before the Clerton Fire and after the Clerton Fire. A strong inversion and alarming news to stay at home triggered a surge of awareness and heightened feelings of anger and frustration around our region's poor air quality. People were furious on Facebook, people were reaching out to me personally through Facebook Messenger, um, asking where they could go, um, what they could do to address this, what, you know, it, it, there was just a lot of, um, rage and anger pent up that was finally released, um, as people learned about how they were forced to or asked to stay home while, while, uh, while US Steel was allowed to continue to emit massive amounts of illegal pollution after their Clerton Fire. So this is a day on the Smell Pittsburgh app from, uh, February 22nd, 2017. This is a kind of a, and you can see on the chart, the blacker the day is on the boxes at the bottom, um, and then not all the visuals are in the handouts, um, for paper and printing sake, but the vis- but the presentation that I'll share with you on PDF will have everything. This just gives you a sense of the difference that I want to share between a, a 2017 bad air day and the worst bad air day to date, which happened during a strong inversion after the Clerton Fire. You can see more complaints and more pollution and more complaints in more areas. The fire caused normally quiet areas, for instance, Glassport, to vocally complain. People who might ordinarily be afraid to speak out gained the courage to talk on camera with me about their anger and their frustration. Some even used expletives in describing the air. Others took their children out of town and/or seriously considered permanently moving away from Pittsburgh during this period of time. I just bumped into someone on the street who recognized me, and I asked him, "What do you think of the air?" And he said, "It's effing putrid," and he lives in Braddock Hills. That was just, just today. Just ask people, and they tell me, they are furious. This is another way to look at the scale of the shift in public perception. The big spike on the right-hand side is from February 22nd, 2017, that same picture that I showed you a few moments ago. And on February 3rd, 2019, you can see a massive spike in, in complaints. So this is just a, you know, just a couple of years later, um, but under very different conditions. The volume is not representative of just the height, just so you know. Um, I also want you to note in the lower left-hand corner of the slide, you see VOCs. That's taken, uh, that's a, a rough approximation of volatile organic compounds as measured by a very inexpensive and relatively unreliable but interesting citizen science-related monitor called Aware. And you can see, however, even with this very low-cost monitoring, there's a significant correlation that I believe is self-evident between VOCs measured on a, maybe a 200 dollar correlation that I believe is self-evident between VOCs measured on a, maybe a $200 monitor and Smell Pittsburgh, Smell Pittsburgh reports. They're highly correlative. And I remember, I don't have a chart like this for the February 2nd, 2019, but I do remember seeing extraordinary levels of VOCs on my Aware monitor outside my house. This is one of the reasons I believe we're seeing higher levels of VOCs lately, um, but usually these things happen when the air is compressed down low to the ground, um, during a strong inversion, which I found to be quite highly predictable, um, using just regular National Weather Service data or data coming from the, the health department. These are the flares at Urban Works running at full bore. Um, they're extremely bright, they're extremely loud. I went up there to take this photo and make a video about it. Uh, a guy drove by, I thought he was going to complain and tell me that I was, was taking away jobs, but he said, it's, it's hard to breathe, just as he drove by, almost unprompted, hard to breathe. This is a photo of a FLIR video that was taken by Earthworks, um, just a few weeks ago. I'm going to show you, this is, uh, volatile organic com, uh, volatile, volatile organic compounds and hydrocarbons filmed with a $100,000 infrared camera designed to measure such things, or designed to show such things. Check out the video behind you. So any notion that this flare is clean burning is thrown right out the window by these images. I don't want to speak for Earthworks, but the, um, it was extraordinary for me to watch them film this and see the camera operator, very experienced, he was, he was, um, I'll say moved by the volume of emissions coming out of that, coming out of both of those sites. They said, uh, the quote is, significant plumes of hydrocarbons and volatile organic compounds. And this is not, uh, this is not temperature, perhaps parts of that were temperature, but they were very clear to indicate that this is a, a, a camera designed to measure gas emissions, not just temperature, and the way that they are measuring it by showing that video around, um, highlight that this is a gas being emitted to the region. Um, I think it's worth, uh, taking lessons from the Aliso Canyon release of gases in, uh, Southern California, very close to where I actually grew up. Um, and I don't know if, I, the weather conditions are different, the emissions levels are different, but it's, uh, it's on an extraordinary scale, the emissions that we're seeing coming from that FLIR, from that flare via the FLIR. So this is back to those days. And people appear to be smelling what is coming from those massive flares, and it's extremely frustrating that US Steel is somehow allowed to keep breaking the law while citizens are asked to stay indoors. I find it almost unfathomable emotionally to grapple with that reality. Um, I wonder why we can't ask our companies to reduce pollution during highly predictable inversions instead of asking people to reduce their own activity. These are some additional days just from March of extreme levels of Smell Pittsburgh reports. We had roughly, I think there's been about 20,000 Smell Pittsburgh reports since the, uh, since the app was initiated, and roughly 4,000 of those have come since the Clerton So people are not just submitting complaints, though, they're speaking out and working to deploy additional air monitors beyond what the health department is deploying. The Purple Air Network that you see here is another indication, uh, proxy for the idea that something is wrong and our voices are not being heard. People take time, myself included, I've been spearheading the rollout of these Purple Airs, but after the Clerton Fire, I received an extraordinary outpouring of, um, of people willing to host a monitor at their house in the Mon Valley where they weren't before. Um, you can see how much more detail you can get from the, from extra Purple Air monitors to enhance and support the, uh, the reference monitors run by the, uh, health department and the DEP and the EPA. And I've been able to figure out not just predictable, um, inversions, but I found that there's a, a sort of a rudimentary algorithm that I can run in my head, that if I see predictions of mixing height, as predicted by the National Weather Service, below 300 feet, um, with winds from the south-southeast, uh, at a speed of less than five miles per hour, that the chance of stench in my neighborhood in Squirrel Hill South, um, is, is very high. That's not an absolute predictor, but I schedule around it in my day-to-day life. And then I check and wake up and check Air Bubbles app, Smell Pittsburgh app, sometimes Air Now, um, uh, the Purple Air map, several other maps to figure out what I'm going to do that day, when I'm going to jog, if I have to wait till the inversion breaks, will it break? Um, so I'm using a lot of technologies just to try to limit my own personal exposure, and I know a lot of people, especially people employed in the tech industry, who are particularly enthralled by the opportunity to geek out their, their, um, the limitations on their exposure levels. And so, um, this, this slide is, shows the sights of people who are now eager to get a Purple Air at their house, but I think we can go much further. Uh, for a tiny fraction of the money in the, held in the Clean Air, um, the, what, Clean Air Fund, we can roll out a thousand Purple Airs. They cost about $189 apiece. Um, people are clamoring for them, they can set them up themselves at their house. $200 times 1,000, it's $200,000. Clean Air Fund has millions and millions and millions. Um, and Denver just got in the paper recently for announcing that they were interested in, um, in the government program, actually, to deploy 100 Purple Airs in Denver. We already have well over 40 going on 50 and 60. Um, we could easily see 100 in the region well before Denver does, completely deployed by citizens and community members, not by the government. My final statement is that all of these measures you see here today were not initiated by government, they were initiated by citizens and organizations and foundations, countless people and groups, because our air quality laws are insufficient to the task or are not being enforced or are not enforceable. Recently, that injustice has been compounded for months on end by US Steel's inability to meet air quality laws after the Clerton Fire at Clerton Coke Works, compounded by their refusal to shut down or hot idle to protect the community. When laws fail, government fails. When government fails, people get hurt. And from what I have observed, the most vulnerable, the poor, the young, the elderly, and racial minority groups suffer the most. Citizens are angry and frustrated and clamoring for change, they just want to breathe clean air, they just want to open their window without encountering stench, they just want to play outside. I ask, how many dozens of low-cost air monitors must we deploy? How many thousands of person hours must we spend? How many tens of thousands of Smell Pittsburgh complaints must we submit? How many signals do you need to compel yourself to move far beyond your comfort zone to remedy the suffering so many of your constituents encounter every day just trying to breathe? Thank you for this hearing, and thank you for your time.
Thank, thank everybody for being here, um, and actually thank the audience. Usually a post-agenda's won't get too many people, but, uh, obviously this is an important thing. So I'm just going to go down the line and, uh, allow my council colleagues to ask questions. I'll start with Councilman Gross and go straight down.
Um, sorry, I tried to keep it brief. Um, I think what I heard today was that we have basically a kind of regulatory environment with the county that is, um, I think I heard you say has a unique position relative to the rest of the nation, and because it preceded both federal and state law, and so we have some kind of extra capacity in our regulatory?
I wouldn't say capacity.
Reg, what word would you use?
Well, it's just.
We just do it locally, which is, I think, the big difference.
Yeah, that's the reason why we have the local authority as opposed to state authority. We had state authority.
Authority maybe is a better thing. So we have the ability to expand that authority to what we're monitoring?
So remember, we're essentially functioning as an agent of the EPA.
All right.
Our monitoring network has to actually be approved by the EPA.
Okay.
So, uh, every single thing we do is under their auspices, and everything we do here is to get to their standards, which is what the national standards are.
And you do, um, so issue the permits that are generating the significant amount of the criteria pollutants, pollutants, though. You are locally issuing those permits.
Yes.
No one else is issuing those permits.
Correct.
So it was, as Allegheny County Health Department is issuing those permits, uh, or not, right? And for how much tonnage or not, and how much emissions or not?
The emissions are always controlled whether the permit's issued or not. Keep that in mind.
And remember, the permits still have to go to EPA.
All regulations apply at all times.
Do you have the authority to go below the EPA limits?
No.
No.
Just checking. Okay, so I'm going to switch a little bit. Um, one of the things that we heard about also is that there are multiple sources, so, um, we heard about these kind of, and again, forgive me if I mix up my vocabulary, I think in the Climate Action Plan, we're talking about like source point and non-source point. We didn't really use that vocabulary today, but it was, so we're talking about like these industrial, um, source point.
Point source, yes.
Point source, thank you. Um, and then, uh, we have this kind of non-point source, is that, is that right? With the roadways and restaurants and kind of more what citizens are doing. It's really hard for me as a, as a layperson even getting a lot of this kind of testimony to keep in mind kind of how much is coming from which kinds of sources. And what, you know, I am mostly concerned about city constituents, so when I had like the Climate Action Plan here and I was chairing the meeting, it was like, well, our carbon emissions are buildings and, um, vehicles. But now we're talking about different kinds of criteria pollutants, so yes, please.
We have very exact numbers, our SIPs include that. And so, um, you know, we have very good transportation numbers, off-road transportation numbers a little bit, that non-point is your house, gas stations, um, small facilities that don't have permits, so it's a very large thing. Agriculture is non-point.
When you say very large thing, is it like 90% and we were spending all of our time talking about the industrial sources that are 10% or, so you say you have very specific numbers, can you give me a kind of relative pie chart?
So like, transportation's probably just under half of all your particular pollution. A lot of that, as well as the significant part of the NOx and VOC that causes ozone. Then you have that regional component, uh, power plants tend to be your largest single industrial sources.
Mm-hmm, and those are more of the sulfides and the PM2s?
Nitrites, but the, and there's primary PM, but the issue with them is they actually send it downwind.
Okay.
Locally, it's our transportation and our Clerton Coke Works and, and open burning, that's where we're getting our localized impact from our own pollution.
It's kind of sitting on us in that blowing way.
Yes, especially when we have inversions, our valleys.
That also depends on the type of, of the standard, the shorter standards are more influenced by local sources, and annual standard is going to receive a lot of the, the pollution that's coming in to, it averages out a lot more. So you have more influence by Ohio and West Virginia on an annual standard than you would on like the SO2 one-hour standard, because it's a short-term standard, it's going to get an impact from plus by.
That's what you're measuring. You can't have traveled that far.
And, yes, within the timeframe.
Okay. So, and I want to switch my questioning a little bit to the, um, what's been going on in Lawrenceville with McConway Torley, I think a few people mentioned that one today. And so if you just want to recap for us, because I don't think the health department addressed McConway Torley permitting, there was a period of time where the permit had lapsed for a significant time, and you did show that kind of like how behind permitting had been.
Yeah, but it's not a, it's not a Title V.
And so it has been reissued, okay, so it's a different category because, yeah.
It was a small. But, but that said, I think one of the things that's important is that during the period of time that that was happening, we asked McConway and Torley to actually not just do modeling about their emissions, but to actually do the testing. And that ends up taking a lot longer, but then you get absolute real numbers about what their emissions are.
Including the fence line testing that is in the community drafted letter that is waiting for response?
Oh, no, no, we've already talked to Lawrenceville, we were just at Lawrenceville United yesterday. We've been doing the, we've been doing that for, for quite a while now.
They've always been fence line monitoring, and they will continue to do so.
Great. Um, and then again, so just following up, it's all good, let's get it into the record, that the incident rates of health risks associated with those particular pollutants that are not maybe your criteria pollutants, that as well, um, concerns over, um, how those pollutants in air quality maybe contribute to cancer rates being higher among adults in central Lawrenceville, exceeding city averages by considerable margins? Any further inquiry?
Well, literally yesterday, we met with, um, Dr. Goldstein and Lawrenceville United to talk exactly about all, a whole variety of their potential sources. MT, but there's also a chemical plant there, and then plus, as you know, Lawrence Butler has become incredibly congested, and there's a lot of concern also about demolition in the neighborhood, and about the increase in restaurants in the neighborhood, and the truck traffic, and a whole variety of things like that.
So everything, every source that was mentioned today.
Yeah, so the good news, so we're sitting down with them.
Be condensed in this.
Right, and talking to them, giving them data, also thinking about are there specific things that they could be doing as a community to think about some of these issues, and I think, um, I, I don't know the follow-up from yesterday's meeting, but I'm certainly that there will be some.
Good to hear it. I appreciate you talking to that topic. I know it's really important to everyone in Lawrenceville. Um, and so then I would, I would just leave it, because I know I'm trying to be as quick as possible, that we, I think we still have this challenge that we're all kind of looking for what more can be done to balance kind of what the city has direct control of, as you mentioned, Ashley, with the city fleet, right, purchasing clean energy, and Rachel talking about what we can control in our diesel emissions that are the, you know, things that we can impose control over, but then how do we create incentives for population-wide change? Because that's where we're going to see the bulk, right? We're going to see, we can, we can start by leadership, controlling what we control, but we really need to think more broadly based about where all of these sources are, even that are being generated by city residents, um, such as vehicles, um, as you mentioned, restaurants and burning.
Sure. You know, we're already obviously talking about the industries, but I think here, some of the things that the city could do is, I actually think there's a lot of work that could be done with traffic patterns.
Thank you.
Um, my understanding is that there's actually technology that can change the lights, for example, when certain levels of pollution are detected.
Yes.
I think there's some really interesting things that could be done there. I think there could be a whole lot better oversight of demolition.
Thank you, too.
Which, so these are a couple of the kinds of things that, that one could do. Um, I think that the, the challenges around open burning, I mean, it would be fantastic if the city would just ban open burning, honestly. Um, I don't know if that's something that you would all consider at the local level, but I think that that would be something that would make a big difference.
So the traffic pattern, I know that we've worked on, um, I remember information from the, sometimes, you know, there's a mixed opinion about whether the, um, TSET, it's not, it's not the name of it, that's the name of the institute, the SureTrack technology, which is down the length, in my district, um, from East Liberty all the way down the length of Baum and around to Bigelow, has been measured at reducing emissions by 30% at intersections, just because it reduced idling time so much. Um, of course, safety advocates are also hoping that it's incorporating pedestrian safety at all those intersections, and we are still looking at data there, but to keep cars, you know, not racing, not going faster, but not stopping and idling so long. Um, so, but just by the algorithmic kind of sensors at each, um, intersection. The demolitions we struggle with, I've had staff work on that, especially around the lead, um, pollutants, and we had meetings with the EPA, and we, we talked extensively about them, asked them if we could have like, you know, our own PLI inspectors deputized or something, right? The way you guys basically are deputized by the EPA, um, and they just said no. Uh, but it's still something that we need to work on, we, we, it's not acceptable, um, to have one inspector for three states that the EPA has to monitor lead and demolitions. That's just not good enough. Um, so it's an issue I think that we all need to continue to talk about and to raise awareness about. So I'll leave it there, I know we've had a very long meeting.
No, thank you, yeah, thanks for being here.
I've took, taken a lot of notes, I really appreciate, and I look forward to seeing , um, any of the, the presentations, if you've got them in print, I want to email them to us, and we can continue to talk and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Coroner for hosting this, and, uh, you've had a busy month.
Busy day, yes.
Done some big things, um, but thank you for, for hosting this and putting this together and to your staff for the work they do. You have some amazing people.
Thank you.
He's right there, but I'm just be honest, you have some amazing people in your staff. So I just, a couple of things, you had talked about the demo, and I just want to make sure that this is clear. So what we were told is that there was a moratorium on demo because of the county, um, the health department putting a moratorium on demo, we're working with the city.
Imagine that.
And, and stopping the demos, uh, for some time. So that's one of the things that we were told, and that we were also, um, there's an increase in cost due to the removal of the asbestos. So I'm, I'm wondering if you're, you, when you're talking about the numbers of properties being demoed.
Private demolitions.
Uh, so you're mixing, uh, there is a couple of things there.
Yeah, tell me, because I want to make sure.
Um, actually, the city was abiding by the rules, and then they weren't. And so you were paying that, then you weren't, now you're paying it again, so I'm not sure what, what, you know, leadership was associated with that, um, in, you know, lapse there, because we, we did have a really good operation with the city, you know, when, when city-funded projects where they were demo.
This is not like my next-door neighbor just pulling a demolition permit for their house and being granted.
No, we're talking about this, I'm talking. We're talking about, I'm talking about the city.
City permitted demolitions.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, there's, there's what the city pays for, for blight, and then there's what you permit for commercial and private demolition and renovation.
Significant.
So, what I'm talking about is the, the way that we were removing asbestos when we demoed a property, paid to have a property demoed.
Recently, there was a hold on the north side, north side properties, because they were being demolished without any inspections, so no evaluation.
There was a hold in the city, and that's why now the cost has increased, because we now have, are removing the asbestos more appropriately. And I'm going to, correct me if I'm wrong, but that now the cost went from $8,000 to like $30,000. And so, it's.
It's an extreme case.
It's an ex, no, that's the, that's the case now. That's the, that's, that's the way it is now.
Well, I know, but asbestos is really dangerous, right?
No, I know that, but I'm trying to understand. So, what I've saw is our prices increased, and I also look at the minutes, I surround the most boroughs. So, I look at the minutes from the boroughs around me and see what they do. And they're building, they're still demoing, demoing properties at the same cost that we used to for $8,000.
So, there's a difference.
I'm wondering who's overseeing the counties.
Okay, so what happens is you can remove the asbestos before you demolish. That's less expensive. It's more expensive than demolition. Or you can, our demo in place, everything has to be treated as asbestos. That's where your costs are, and that you don't have to be there.
I almost want to have our public, I almost want to have our PLNI director at the table.
You really need to, because that's the extreme case.
And you should probably have that. We've had multiple, multiple discussions with her about this over the last two years. I thought things were going better now, at least in terms of what they were supposed to be doing and that they were doing it appropriately.
I thought so too, but the cost has increased tremendously, so.
Well, there's no question that whether you do the asbestos.
But they increased for the city and not for the county, municipalities around?
No, 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 they increased for the county too. I mean, basically, they.
So, what I'm telling you is I've looked at the records, and they do not increase.
It's the way they're demolishing.
They're not increasing. So, how are they demolishing old properties differently than we are?
So, you're using emergency declarations to demolish the property, and then it costs more to clean it up, as opposed to taking it out and then demolishing.
So, I called a post-agenda for PLNI, will schedule that, and I'll bring in the, the cost that they're doing.
Yeah, we, we would like to see your information, because that would, that would help us a great deal, because we are getting, we're getting the same complaints from the COGS because, because of the increased cost. We know that there's an increased cost, there's not much we can do about it. But there's, yeah, and that's, that's what's happening, but it is happening.
So, that's why I'm wondering if that's where your numbers are coming from.
But let's be clear, this is for the protection of public health, you know, we can argue the cause.
No doubt about it. And I'm not saying I don't want it done, I'm saying I want it done fairly and equally across the county.
And if it's being done equally, we need to know about it. That's, that's.
So, then I want to talk about the, when you talk about the asthma, and, and my grandson has asthma, I was just telling Councilwoman Gross, he actually is hospitalized for the asthma several times. So, it is a huge concern. But one of the things I think for people that they don't really know, and they don't really get engaged, because if they don't, if it doesn't affect you, you're not going to take the interest. And it is really complex. And when you have someone from CMU, my dad was a chemical engineer from Carnegie Mellon. So, I can tell you when you have somebody explaining that to the average person, you kind of disassociate or disinterest yourself, because it's just so complex. So, I think it's important to make sure people understand how it affects them, how pollutants affect them and what it can do. One of the things I tell people is, I, I don't think people realize that we bus students to their door if they have asthma. You're eligible for, for, bus, for the bus company to come directly to your door. So, the cost of that sooner, some way or another, that cost affects the, the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, whether you're interested in asthma, whether you're interested, whether you have somebody who's affected by asthma or any illnesses. I think that sooner or later, you have to realize the cost. I'm curious with, if anybody's ever looked at the cost overall for what we do, what we spend on busing for students with asthma. Councilwoman Harris could probably find that information out faster than any of us, because she was on the school board for so long. But I'm curious about that. And I think the wood burns is interesting, because I had never thought about that. And to be honest with you, it's a big thing in our area, on our side of town. A lot of people do, I think they'd run me out of town if we said we would ban it. But I think knowing that, that's a contributor in what you're burning matters and all this stuff. I think we'd, having those, some like little bullet points or something that we can share with our residents would be so helpful, so that we can, you know, better educate. I was surprised to hear you talk about anxiety, because I just said to somebody the other day, does it seem to you that everybody you know has some type of anxiety? Everybody's anxious, everybody, I said, I've never seen it, so I don't know if it's overdiagnosed or if something's happening, or if it's something in the air. And literally, I guess it's something in the air. So, I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't know.
Lots of things. Not necessarily the sole course, sole reason for people's anxiety, but.
Right.
There may be a causal relationship.
Yeah, because I mean, I, it's really, it's really prevalent now, I mean, more than I've ever seen or heard, but it's just been, it's, it's nerve-wracking, actually. And I would love to invite you, Ashley, to, out to our community to do, or whomever you send, to do some work in our community to, to better educate a lot of us, just to get people interested. I think people on our side of town are really interested. I was telling people this the other, other day, and I said this on council, I said, our side of town does a lot in terms of environmental stuff. And I said, people don't really realize that, because they typically think of these types of things as an east-end issue. Well, I am an east-end girl who moved to the west end 30-some years ago. But I, it's been an issue that we've been really, we started an environmental trial comprised of all recycled material. We've introduced the anti-litter program, just a lot of stuff that we've done in terms of the environment. And so, this would just be one more thing that I would love to, you know, expand and bring people to our side of town to, to talk a little bit more about and educate. I think most people probably know, but I think that just hearing how they can get involved and what they can do to change is what's important. So, I'd love to have you come. And if, I wonder if any of you together have something, like, do you have some kind of bullet points of how people can help? Do you have anything together?
I think they do, and we do, so we can.
Just something simplified, you know, for the average resident can just read and say, okay, I can do this today, you know? Do you have something like that?
We have things that go out whenever the air quality gets poorly and says, here are things you can do on this day because of the.
Yeah, I share those. I share them on my social media sites, I do. Okay. Well, that's it for me. Thank you all for your work. It's really important and, and really, obviously, so involved. So, thank you very much for all you do. It was good to see you doing well, Ash.
All right, thank you for coming. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes. Thank you all for being here. And I guess I had a couple of questions on, first, you said the north side, and I represent the north side. Now, what I understand, what we were doing about five years ago is we stopped and we started pouring the asbestos out first, and then we would tear down the building. I don't know when that started to turn.
Well, that's the way, that's the most common and most proper way to do it, is to remove the asbestos. And then the rest of the building can be demolished and gotten rid of as, as regular debris and taken to, to.
What we were doing, and I was just wondering why we stopped doing that.
I just want to tell you, that scares me every time it happens.
Yeah, there was about a two-year period where the city just stopped. They, you know, we weren't, they weren't engaging.
I think we were having some confusion, communication issues on what was rolling.
We can get back to you.
You want to know what confusion is? Let this go off when you're in the room.
Okay. And then, that's why it barks. Okay, and then on the clean air, the ones that are $89, I believe you were talking about. We do have some of those in the north side. And we're going to add some. First, we have them down in the Brighton Heights area. And the reason we have them down there, maybe someone could answer this question for me. I understand over in McKee's Rocks that they are taking the sandstone and, and somehow making it thinner than a powder would be silica, and that is what they use for fracking.
This is a, no, MRIE is a company that transfers fracking sand, takes it off of barges, puts it on trucks and takes it to two places. Fracking sand is just like regular sand, beach sand, except it's a very specific size. It is not powdered, it's not small, and it's actually a larger size, and it's a uniform size, because when they frac, when they send those, it through, they need a certain size to hold open the shale. So, it's, it's not really a powdered, it's actually, in fact, we, what we did was, because there were complaints, because there was sand different places on bridges and such, so we took samples at the bridges and we took samples at the plant. And, and we're not finding the finer sand. We're not, we're finding larger, not inhaleable.
Maybe some of the neighbors that have some of that steam.
We've been talking to the neighbors, and, and a few of them are looking at doing some, some testing to, but actually, they had a company that came in and did test sand and confirmed the numbers that we, we had. So, what we were finding was that the sand was larger than what you would normally inhale. It's falling, because it, sand falls when you dig it. And the company, in the meantime, has done a, a number of things to, to minimize. They have washing stations and covered, you know, they've done, they've gone well beyond what needs to be done. We, we have an, we actually have an action against them, enforcement action, for a few of their violations, but they've gone a lot further than that to make sure that it's, it's minimized. We're going to continue to inspect and review that plant to make sure that they're not putting sand out there, but we don't believe that the sand is of the inhalable level.
To give you an idea, we were talking about PM 2.5. 2.5 is microns, it's the diameter that gets into your lungs. EPA has a standard for that. They also have a standard for PM 10, which can, you can breathe in, but it doesn't, it doesn't cross in your bloodstream. What we measured at the facility is over 70. So, that means it is, it is a larger particle size. And again, this is fracking sand. It comes in at a very specific size, and if there's anything smaller than that, it's worthless to them.
Which is something else that pollutes and causes fires.
There have been some concerns raised by some local community groups around the method of the testing, that I believe, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect, that you tested by like scooping a sample, but I don't know that there was any airborne.
Yes.
There was airborne testing?
The facility has onsite monitors for airborne.
And are those results available?
We can get them to.
The airborne testing results?
Again, they're not signed particular matters.
Okay. I'm also curious if the people inside the facility are required to wear respirators?
That's, we have no jurisdiction there.
Okay. Because it would seem to me if they are, then it would point to the possibility that when sand crushes together and transfer, that smaller than the standard particle size are emitted at that time?
We, we hear that argument a lot. This is silica quartz sand. If you've ever seen the process, the, the massive amount of pressure required to crush that, it's very difficult to reduce. However, when you're working in close proximity, it's like black lung, large particles can just fill your lungs up.
With large particles?
With large particles.
Okay.
So, it's just block, it's like, again, it's like, it's like black lung. It's larger particles that just fill your lungs up.
Okay. It'd be great to see the data that the company has collected. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to see that, because I, I did pull a number of papers up on the internet. It's great for that kind of information, but I'd like to see what, what the county and then what residents have, because it talks about the serious lung disease.
Right, but I think it's really important, at least, at this point, we don't have any evidence of the smaller particles, whether it's from the residents or from the two different, the outside guys, us. I mean, there's now been at least two different agencies, both us and an outside group, that have tested that sand as well. And it has not shown that level of, the size that would be critical to consider it a health issue. And as you know, I mean, you can go to the beach and be around sand too. I mean, so, sand is not necessarily considered to be any kind of a harmful issue unless the size is tiny.
Well, this isn't just sand, sand.
Same, same composition.
No, it's sand, sand.
The beach sand is the same composition as fracking sand. It's the same composition, it's just a specific size of sand, whereas beach sand has a full range of sizes, from very particle, very small particles up to large particles. Fracking sand is still silica.
The same components.
Okay. I was just wondering why it always causes the oldest known workplace danger.
Again, in places where you grind, like a kitchen counter location, where you grind things down, when it gets to the fine powders, then, then that becomes, you know, so there's a, there's a work.
Like if I got some clothes in my lungs.
But you would have to actually first forcibly grind it down. It does not happen just from sand hitting sand, it has to be forcibly ground.
But that is taken down the river on the barges.
They don't grind it.
And there's nothing on top of that when it comes down the river.
Yeah, but they don't grind it. So, if you were to say a Pennsylvania glass and sand, which is now US silica, where they, they take silica sand and process it, but not for fracking? Fracking sand is usually dug up somewhere, say in Wisconsin or North Texas. US silica, well, they, they're, they have a problem with siliconite, because they are actually processing, they're grinding it there. McKee's Rocks, they don't grind it, it just comes in on the barge and they take it off. And again, it's still that uniform size, so they're not.
They seem to be taking it the other way down the river.
Well, they'll take it wherever the well is that needs to be.
They can go up or down river, so it's, it's stored and transferred there.
I, I'd be curious the difference between what the residents have and what the county has.
We were told that the residents have the same data as we have, but.
Okay. And then, we're, we're worrying about the power plants, but then we're not worrying about the fracking in the county, no?
Okay, so, fracking, the only jurisdiction that we would have over fracking is air quality. Everything else having to do with fracking would be at the state level, DEP. So, the drilling, the permitting for fracking, that all happens at the level of the Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, so you don't look at anything that the state looks at?
We're not involved in that. Now, we did do, as you probably know, we did for the two county-owned sites, or the county sites that they, whatever, we did have air monitors, and we monitored the air before, during, and after, all through all the phases of fracking. And we did not find any abnormal activity.
And when they have the explosions.
That was during, we did it during that time too. We have all that data. Now, that said, if a large frac pad, usually more than five wells, I think.
Seven.
Or seven wells, cannot adhere to the state level of methane, then they would have to have an, pardon?
And VOC.
And VOC. Then they would have to have an air permit. At this point in time, we have never had a fracking site in our county that has actually had to get an air permit.
Okay. So, we have no permits for the air in the county.
Yeah, most of the fracking wells in the state do not have permits either. There are a few very large ones in the northeast, I think, that has some. But most wells in the state and all the wells in Allegheny County fall under the state's exemption for, for getting a permit.
Okay. Mark, do you have other information on this?
I'm curious to know if the fracking at Edgar Thompson Mill that's been proposed I'm curious to know if the fracking at Edgar Thompson Mill that's been proposed and seeking permits is, whether it will be required to have a health department engaged if, because the well is being drilled on US Steel's existing facility where there already are permits applied to that, does that get nested underneath those permits?
We've asked, we've asked them, the company, give us more information, and we're going to evaluate it when it comes in on that permit.
We haven't received any air quality data from them.
Okay.
But even then, they're a separate company, so it wouldn't fall under the Title V permit.
There was information that came out at the hearing recently that it seemed to indicate, I don't know if I heard correctly, but it seemed to indicate that there would be a direct connection to US Steel's manufacturing facility.
This is the information that we need to get from the plant.
We don't have that yet.
When we get the information from the plant, then we can do a full evaluation of what is required.
Thank you.
Or what is not required.
I'm going to become your friend. Okay, the other question, and, and I'm concerned about the pollution, explosions. They are bringing the double stack trains in now, as you know. And right now, they can't get it through the north side because they can't get under the bridge. And then after that, they're not going to be able to get under the next bridge. So there's a lot of work that would have to be done. And on a simple, just a little curve over in Mount Washington, when the Listerine shifted, down came the Listerine, then the diapers, then the furniture, then the cat litter. But they carry other liquids, gas and explosives, and they like to bring them through our neighborhoods and just through between the north side and shady side, just like fourteen ninety degree turns, and they can't make a simple bend, let alone, is there any concern from the county since we are part of the county?
There's concern.
Even though the county, the county charges us taxes, but it seems like we don't get the same services as other.
There's concern, but that's a federal, I mean, it's rail, so it's, it's pure federal.
Okay.
Not even, not even the state can touch it.
So you wouldn't deal with anything with that?
We don't have the authority.
Maybe council, we've, we've been dealing with guns and.
Well, a number of years ago, we tried to actually do idling of trains, and we were very politely told by the railroad companies and the federal government that that is not our jurisdiction, and we are not to be writing rolls for rail cars.
Oh, okay. Did they put that in writing to you?
No.
The state of California challenged that, and it's now legal precedent. I mean, it's in the Clean Air Act, California decided to challenge that part of the Clean Air Act, trying to regulate the operation of trains within their state, and it was a pretty resounding no, you cannot. And so now it's legal precedent.
How about overpasses and such? Do those need permits for construction? Who gets them?
It's not an air quality issue.
For overpasses, we, we'll not be in air, yeah.
It's an air quality issue if the diesel's in the, if the, there's an associated risk.
Yeah, it'd be a clean construction issue for the, for the construction, if the, you know, city or the county has a clean construction role. But beyond that, it would not be an air, it would be not within our jurisdiction. We have limited what we can and can't do.
An air issue, but it's not one that we have any authority.
Okay. So we have all these pollutions, and we're one of the highest, but the county can't touch half of what they are. They're state and federal.
Right, but like cars?
Yeah, we can't touch cars, we can't touch, I mean, the federal, the Clean Air Act gives the state certain authorities for certain minimal things like gasoline. But as far as rail and tug and river traffic, marine traffic, aviation, we are specifically exempt.
A few things we've been successful with, with both trains, it was a switcher train in McKeesport, and tugboats, is we've been able to get federal dollars to encourage retrofits to cleaner, to cleaner vehicles.
Voluntary.
It's voluntary, we don't have the authority to require it, but with the encouragement of the, you know, the rail companies and the tug, Port of Pittsburgh, we were able to find some funds and help them to start retrofitting and getting some cleaner vehicles in.
Okay. So I guess my, I think it's my last question, and I'll just check because I was jarted down, but, well, it's like a second to the last. The city is concerned about, and residents are concerned about using the straws and using the plastic lids. And I remember when we had the paper cups with the paper lids and the paper straws, which could happen again. But what I can't understand is, and I just came across this the other day, and I'm glad we were having this meeting, thermoplastic, that the city decided to use thermoplastic to do our crosswalks and the lines on the street, and I believe there's three thousand five hundred crosswalks that they would like to do with thermoplastic, which in California, they have already said that any exposure to this is cancerous for the breathing. And then, I've watched it on the streets, particularly if you go in the back of our building, they laid some down, and it's supposed to last two or three years. Well, I guess with the salt trucks and the scraping in the winter, that is going into our water. So not only is there the pollution of breathing, but also the pieces that are going in are worse than having fifty straws go down into the water system. So I was wondering, do you look at anything that the city's doing like that and try to?
You, you said the product is commercial products, and so we don't have jurisdiction to them.
Yeah, because what the city was doing before is they were using the cheapest paint, and I think it cost a hundred and twenty dollars for the cheapest paint, where for the same mileage that they got on the cheapest paint, it's a thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Are these city streets or the state streets? Do you know what?
These are city. This is all being done by the city.
This is really new. I, I really don't have any information on that, on, you know.
I always try to find out what we're doing when something new comes up. And it talks about avoiding release into the environment. They're talking about the spills and covering the drains, respiratory protection that should be used by people that are even putting this done, which I'm sure nobody told any of our labors, because I haven't seen them with any long sleeve shirts on or their faces covered.
This is really new to us, so I don't know that we would have much information on. There's, I mean, there's hazards with putting paint down as well, so it would be, it would have to be a relative analysis for the actual worker, what they can do and can, I would think just off the top, although it's very dangerous, we do this without any knowledge, is it's while it's still fluid that it's, it's more of an issue than when it actually dries. But we, this is all new to us, so we really, I, I don't know, I don't think either one of us would have.
Even in a rain, and if you walk across to one of the county buildings on this, some people have fallen, it's very slippery too. So I don't know why they won't try to use a better paint than the cheapest paint. I mean, they went from the cheapest paint and now to a plastic. So I just wonder if the county ever looks.
I don't have any information about that.
Okay, it would be great if, because we're in the county, so, and you're the health department, so I was wondering if you could sort of look into that?
We can see what we can find, I don't know what, we don't know if we have any information about it.
Again, the thing with thermoplastic, it's an issue, when it sets, it's considered fairly inert.
Really?
But it's just that, that application is where it's a problem, because I know a lot of facilities have been banning the use of thermoplastics for products, because for the occupational workforce, it's a danger.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's what I'm aware of, as far as.
That's number one, but getting into our waterways.
Again, I don't know if there are any regulatory limits that I'm aware of for daily loading for, you know, abraded plastic, and so.
Yeah, well, I mean, California always found out.
California is the nation's leader, they lead EPA in environmental protection.
But why should we wait and let some of our employees, our residents, get cancer when we could look into it ahead of time, right?
That's, well, it's an occupational thing, so it makes, it does make it difficult.
But it's also getting into our waterways, and that's a problem.
But until there's a regulatory limit, it's hard for us to take action.
Okay, so you just sit there and limbo until?
So I think we're happy to look into it.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that. Okay. And I think, because, I mean, I'm concerned, not just, I'm concerned about my grandchildren growing up, and, you know, where I live, and, but I noticed we don't have much around that other than the buildings that should be taken down. But we were doing it the right way with the asbestos, and then all of a sudden.
We're, we're meeting with the city to, to resolve the issues and, and to get things done.
Permits?
I think we can do that.
Okay. Okay, well, I thank you all for being here, and I think that's all the questions, but I thought I would just maybe ask you if you could look into some of those.
Yeah, we can, definitely can, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. I want to thank everybody. I know it's been a long, long day. I think, you know, we all have extensive notes. I think some that came to mind is two hundred and fifty dollar, or two hundred and fifty billion dollars worth of damage is, is one that really stands out to me. Some permitting issues that we can obviously do, you know, with regards to asbestos, especially when private businesses are doing their work. Regardless of how we maintain our properties and demo ours, that's important. But also when somebody's coming for a permit to demo a house to build a new building, are they doing it the right way? And I think that's an easy, should be a relatively easy amendment to our code when you're getting a permit from the city of Pittsburgh. I think Councilwoman Harris, you're talking about an internal policy that we at council definitely need to check into, because I heard about thermoplastics as well. So I really just want to thank everybody for coming. All of your organizations do a lot. I think, you know, in talking to our residents that get people motivated and learn about this, I want to thank you because you're on the front lines. Especially, I know Rachel, you had mentioned something about, you know, clean construction. I don't know why, as you mentioned, all of us sit on a board somewhere, that usually has to do with some type of construction, why we can't do that, or at least push to see what type of construction they're using and how we can make it more effective and support our environment. So I really want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank everybody for being here in the audience as well. I know it's, it's been a lengthy post-agenda, but I think it's one that's well deserved, and it's something that's important, and council members need this information. So if you can get it to us any way you can, via email or print it out, and we'll get it, we'll distribute it through the clerk's office. I also want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger, who, again, co-chaired this, and I know is having another meeting relatively soon, I believe in May. So, thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.